We are live or recording, I guess.
Thank you all for coming to the committee of the whole meeting on May 25th, 2021 at 5:30 PM. Call the meeting to order.
No move.
Approval of the agenda. Thank you, Councilor Pence. Do you have a second, please?
I'll second it.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Country-minded. Motion passed. Approval of the previous minutes from April 26th, 2021.
We're on mute there. The agenda, we should be adding the Salchad as the agenda.
We're going to add to the agenda Salchad?
Yeah, there's an email going a few days ago.
Okay.
Can I add computers to the agenda, too?
Okay, so we will add Salchad as number eight. Computer as number nine. And then next meeting will be number 10, adjournment number 11. I would have to ask for approval of the agenda all over again, please.
No move.
Thank you, Councilor Knight, seconded by Councilor Pence. Is that correct?
That's right.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Country-minded. Motion passed. Now, approval of the previous minutes from April 26th.
No move is written.
Second.
Thank you, Councilor Pence, and seconded by Mayor McGilvery. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Country-minded. Motion passed. Number four on the agenda is business arising from the minutes. Do we have any business arising? No? Okay, moving on to correspondence. In the absence of Susan Page, would you be able to read the correspondence for us?
Certainly. So for 5A, from Northumberland Regional High School, we received a card saying, "Town of Stellerton, thank you for assisting our Karma Club in their efforts to provide food and supplies for students." So that was May 6th, 2021. 5B, for Healthy Pictor County, we received the following email from Nicole LeBlanc on May 17th, 2021. "Hello, May 2021 report to funders." Attached, you'll find 2021 Report to Funders. "And we ask that you please share it with your respective councils. Any questions, we're always happy to discuss." "Welcoming our newest med staff members. As noted in the report, we recently welcomed our newest internist, Dr. Amanda Van Graham, who joined us here with her husband and two children from South Africa." "As well, we will soon be welcoming our newest family medicine resident, Dr. Erin Bates, to the Westville Clinic for the next two years as part of the North Nova Family Medicine Residency Program. "Dr. Bates previously worked in New Glasgow as a nurse practitioner, and we are excited to be welcoming him back along with his wife and two children. "If you'd like to write a letter to welcome either of the following, you can address it as such with the respective addresses." "And NSH's recruitment team has a Facebook page. They're also on Instagram and Twitter, @MoreThanMedicineNS, and recently shared a post about a webinar next Tuesday for those considering practicing here. "If you'd like to share or keep an eye on content, see if that's something you'd like to share to your respective social media pages. "Link to NSH's More Than Medicine is there. Thank you for your ongoing support in all capacities. Stay safe, Nicole."
Thank you. On that specific note, we've never really written a letter of welcome to any of the new doctors, have we, in the past?
Yes, we do that on a regular basis. Whenever we get the notice of a new one, we have a letter that we write and I sign and we send it off. I believe, I know we've already done both of these documents.
Perfect. Thank you very much, Mayor. Okay.
So moving on to 5C, from Pictor County Volunteer Ground Search and Rescue to Stellerton Town Council. "I would like to thank you for the approval of our funding request. The funds you have provided will allow us to continue to operate and focus on providing trained search personnel to assist in finding lost people. "Pictor County Volunteer Ground Search and Rescue is a 100% volunteer organization, and contributions to the team such as this are very much needed and appreciated. "These funds will be used to help us maintain our equipment and to help facilitate the training of our members. "Thank you for your patronage. Kyle McKenzie, President." And that was received May 17th, 2021.
Thank you, Paige.
And last but not least, we received this on May 4th, 2021. "Dear 4H supporter, we at Pictor County 4H are reaching out to you, our loyal supporters. "We are now entering our second 4H year with having to deal with new program challenges due to the COVID-19 global pandemic. "Last year, we had to put our program on suspension while we learned about our new reality living with COVID-19. "This year, our registration is open with a modified way of doing our 4H program. "We are still unsure what that will mean for our members. Our goal is to have all members complete their projects at Achievement Day. "Will we have exhibitions and award ceremonies? At this time, we are unsure. "What we do know is COVID-19 has changed everything we know and love, "but we must learn to live a new way, find new ideas to come together, think outside the box. "The 4H motto is 'Learn to do by doing.' It is the very thing that sets 4Hers apart, so we will adapt. "Pictor County 4H is lucky to own two great buildings. We hope to gather there soon in a new way. "But until we can gather our programming, we will be a hybrid model with virtual communications. "Thus, setting up these platforms can be expensive. "We have not been able to fundraise over the last year in our usual ways, "but our buildings still need to be, still need maintenance, and repairs and program costs continue. "Our hope is that you would make a donation to Pictor County 4H as you have in the past. We will offer an official tax receipt. "Sponsorship levels are $30 to $49 as a friend, $50 to $99 as bronze, $100 to $249 as silver, and $250 plus as gold. "We would like to thank you in advance for your consideration and continued support of the 4H program in Pictor County. "Yours and 4H, Pictor County 4H Leaders Council."
Well, thank you very much, Paige, for stepping up. Don't, and I don't know if you know this, Paige, or not, but do we have that in the budget already because we have donated in the past for them? Or what, what do we know about this?
I personally am not sure at this time, but I can certainly find out from Brenda.
I think, I think, Mr. Chair, I think 4H has been on, on, on the donation list before, but I'm not 100% sure on that.
If we want to just go ahead and do it now, or we can wait and see what we did last year, maybe make a decision to counsel?
Yeah, it's two weeks from now, I guess, so it wouldn't be a bad idea to wait until we understand what we have done in the past and what's in money in the budget right now.
Yep.
Okay. Paige, would you be able to research that for us?
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
I just wanted to thank Councilor Pence for 5A, the Karma Club Pod, for bringing that to our attention. We missed it during budget time. And thank you, Councilor Pence, for this important project for having support.
Thank you.
Mayor.
Okay, so moving on to number six, started a mobile app. I'm assuming that's you, Paige?
That is indeed. So I believe last Tuesday is when we officially launched the app in the App Store. We announced it with the press release to media, our website, and we had a very quick uptick for people getting involved. The, the response was very positive. Currently, I don't have the analytics for exactly how many people have it downloaded, but on our highest day so far, there was about 70 people that used it. So that's pretty good for, for starting, and I'm sure, once we actually send out a first alert, then we'll have more of an idea of how many people are on it, because that would be the day that people check it and give more accurate readings to that. As well, Susan and I, prior to her leaving, drafted a Stellerton Alert App Policy. So that was with this committee, the whole report package. I can share it here as well. And that is for, it's not just the app specifically, but for social media. I think that's the wrong policy. Give me one second. Is it? Okay, okay. So the intention of this policy is to ensure that we're not overwhelming the system, whether that's the app system specifically, or even just our, our social media channels. There's a lot of, a lot of times that pages can get backlog with information that may not be necessary or appropriate for that, that platform. So this, this policy would be in place that if, if there are questions or if people are asking for things to be shared, that we can refer to this as, "This will be approved, this will not be approved." This is something that, you know, there's a little flexibility with, you know, if it will or will not be. So this was just our initial draft of, of what we were looking at. I'm not sure if there were any questions or concerns regarding it, or if there's anything that was missed.
I said a couple of questions. That's not the most recent version they have up there?
I didn't, I didn't think so.
But it does most, but my comments are for the requires council approval section. You have, I think we said verse in there, too. You have death notices is one that require, I think we have birth notices, too.
Sure.
And will not be approved. Benefits or fundraisers, I think they should be up to the council discretion as well. If one of those local fundraisers, we might want to put it through there, and I think we should make the decision or so. Those are my only comments. Other than that, those good to me.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor McGilvery. Any other questions or comments on this app? I do have something, Paige. I downloaded the app and I went through it with some of the icons that's on there. Some of them takes you to the website and so on, and I'm familiar with the website. I, and I, you know, depending on the council's wish here, I think it would be a good idea if we send a test run, a message, just to see how the message is going to be received and what the feedback on it would be, I guess. For me, I would just want to know how that emergency test or emergency measures would come through, so that if a real emergency was to come up, I would know how, how it's going to come, and I won't be shocked, I guess, or something. What's the council's feeling on this test message?
I think that's an excellent idea, Simon.
I think maybe.
A test run would be ideal.
Yeah, and I think we can socialize it in our social media first, or in maybe in our letters that we send every month, every three months, just so that the people are aware that what we're doing before we do the test run, I guess.
Certainly.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much. An excellent job on this page. It's, right now, there's nothing really happening, but believe me, when something is happening, it will become very beneficial.
Well, all I can think about is, is the water contingency by law and those stages coming up, like, I'm, I'm, I'm ready to use it, so.
Almost send something out now, just saying like, "Hi, from the town of Stellerton, thanks for downloading our app." That could be like an initial message, just like a welcome type of thing. I don't know if we do emergency broadcast, and do we do emergency broadcast? That'd be more like provincial, wouldn't it?
It, it wouldn't necessarily be emergency, but we can do a test of, of any sort to, that would show people what it's like when it comes up on their phone and what to expect. So it's not necessarily the emergency side, but definitely that awareness aspect.
Yeah, I, I think it would be a good idea. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it would be, you know, first of all, we'll say thank you to them, as Danny said. And then after that would be, this is how an emergency text will come to you in case of an emergency. Okay.
Perfect.
Mr. Chair, on that policy that's put forward, Dan, do we need a, do we have to have a motion on that, or is it just?
Is it finalized?
No, I'll, I'll take into account, I'll, I'll take into account Danny's notes, and I'll send those, send those along as well, and then if there aren't any other changes, then we'll make those then, and then.
Okay.
Approve it, council.
Yeah.
Yeah. The next meeting.
Yes. Okay, perfect. Thank you very much. Number seven is dog park update.
Yes, so for the dog park, last Monday, that would have been on the 17th, Pat Dunn, Councilor Brian, Colin Chisholm, the Pioneer Coal Supervisor, Blaine, Jamie, and myself met, and we shared ideas in relation to developing a new dog park in the town of Stellerton. We compared two locations, one being the Heritage Avenue location and the other being by the Pioneer Track. With going back and forth, we kind of came to the conclusion that the Pioneer Track location would be more ideal, considering a number of factors, including the amount of work that would be required at the Heritage Avenue location, as we would need to be clearing trees, leveling it off to create a new parking lot, as well as the, how secluded an area up by the Pioneer Track is, it's very ideal for a dog park. It's not, there's no nearby houses that dog parking would, would annoy any nearby residential areas, as well as the lights on the way up to the Pioneer Track is very well lit up. A spotlight would be ideal for the dog park, to kind of keep it more well lit in the parking lot. Also, we're able to extend the existing parking lot, not the parking lot for the track necessarily, but there is another little area as the parking lot that we can extend that would be less, or much more cost efficient. The, the location is also large enough to have a walking track surrounding the dog park if we so choose to do that. The location is also very open, wide, wide open, clear of trees, which is recommended. And once the land by Pioneer Track is given to the municipality, there's great potential to develop more of a sport and recreation spaces to allow this location to be recognized as a outdoor recreational space, even more so it is now. Going forward, the plans are for Daryl to survey the land, allowing Blaine to develop a plot plan, which will be then sent to Pat Dunn, as well as I'm getting together costs as it relates to developing the dog park.
Perfect. That's great news.
Just to, just to further add to that, when we were up to look at, one of the big concerns we had previously, we looked at that a few years ago, and the thing was the isolation. It was a concern with people, women and that up there. But the irony of it was, when we were up there looking at the dog park, people were coming to get in their car with their dogs, walking their dogs. The, 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 the next day, I went up, took a drive up. When I went up, there was a lady up there walking her dog, and I had talked to her and asked her what she thought of it. She thought it was an excellent idea. And in comparison, that one to the dog park we have now, or the small park we have now, that one is much better lit, and the one down in the old Foxbrook Road is, is in a dungeon. It's dark, you can't see, it's out of the way. When we went up, Fran and I took a drive up there in the nighttime, there's lights coming up that road, right up and pass the dog park, up to the racetrack that we don't have down in the old Foxbrook Road. So it's actually less isolated than the one we have now, and it's, it wouldn't be an issue. My biggest concern was the isolation, but when I looked at it and we discussed it, it's, it's not isolated and, and it is protected.
Perfect. Thank you very much, Councilor Knight. So that's great news to hear. Do we have an idea of how big we think enough here?
Right now, no, we're, I'm waiting to see what, what Daryl comes back with after he surveys the land, and then I think we'll get a better idea of how big we can make it up there.
So can you please include maybe a couple of options? Because at the end of the day, it's all going to depend on the budget and the availability of funds for that. But, you know, if, if we, and this is something that we have advocated for, for, is that, you know, you don't have to create something huge from the get-go, but something that you can build upon. So just in your proposal, when you, once, once it's done, you know, whether it's the fencing, whether it is the post one or two with the spotlights, you know, just provide a few options for the council to be able to make an informed decision.
One of the things we have to point out, too, is the fact that the land up there, another advantage, is owned by the government and hasn't been turned over. But in our conversation, I found the land at the racetrack is on, is owned by the government, it's not ours. The land, the tower is on, is owned by the government, it's not ours. The whole area up there is still owned by the government, but they give them permission to use it. So the possibility would be easier to get, by getting permission to use it. But the thing you got to keep in mind, too, is one of the complaints I'm hearing about the dog park and the old Foxbrook Road, it's too small. There's people go up there and they won't use it, they walk around outside. So build one, we have to build one. If we're going to spend the money on it, we have to spend the money and put one in there, it's significant size. We can't put, some, one person referred to it as playpen. We can't put a playpen in there. So I, you know, and I think that's what we're looking at, we're, we're going to get prices and Noah's going to get prices on the fencing. So you, you, the biggest cost is going to be the fencing. When we spoke to Colleen Chisholm, who was up there with us as well, and Colleen, we asked him if he would owner to see if they will do some, some workforce and give us some freebies. So if the owner, if they give us some freebies or they help us out, then, then the, the instructional part, the only cost then would be the fencing.
Perfect. Thank you very much, Brian, and I agree with you 100%. You know, when I was advocating for the dog park, you know, at the time, the only budget that we had was to create a small, small dog, dog park at the time. And we were able to put it to beside the soccer field. But the intent was from the get-go with yourself and the other council members is, you know, let's start with this and see what we can do from a bigger perspective. And, you know, I think we are at the position right now that hopefully we'll be able to get a big dog park. It's not only going to be for Stellerton, it's going to be for Pictor County.
That's right, Mr. Chair. There's no dog park right now in Pictor County, so Pictor County, not just Stellerton.
Excellent. Any other comments?
Yes, I have a question. Are there hours on one, on Foxbrook Road, like, it's open from this time to that time? Or that, is that?
No. There's no hours right now, Susan, they go up, you know, when it gets dark, they can't see where they go, but that pretty well chases them out, you know. But, and, and, and we can put limitations on, on, on that, of course, the hours up there. And, and, and the plus about it, too, is, and Noah mentioned, we, if, if you remember up in the Valley Woods, we put a spotlight up there, it illuminated the rink so the kids could skate. Well, there's a pole already there, so the only cost would be putting a spotlight. We wouldn't have to put a pole in. We could attach a spotlight to the pole that's there, and that would illuminate the area. And it's just, it's a spotlight, it's something like the streetlight.
Yeah, I'd just like to see that, you know, like, you don't want people up there all hours of the night walking dogs.
And, and I agree with you. I agree with you, yeah.
Closure time or something.
Yeah, especially that we have a closure time for our parks, regular parks, you know? So we should have the same thing for, for the dog parks as well. Perfect.
Yeah, there would be, there would certainly be rules laid out, set down there, that the hours that'd be able to be there. And that, and that is one of the reasons, of course, like, Noah, we talked about is when you put a dog park, you can't have it near a playground. We went through this four years ago. You can't have a playground, you can't, you shouldn't have it near soccer fields or ball fields, and definitely not in neighborhoods, because dogs barking, you'll have residents complaining. So up there, I know it's in your backyard, Susan, but up there, hopefully, you won't hear the dogs barking. But anyway, you know, and, and, and it's a more isolated area.
Okay, thank you very much, Susan. Anything else from anyone? Good. Okay. Number eight is Salchad. Blaine, I'm assuming this for you?
Absolutely. So the town put out a request for proposal for a design build of a new Salchad. As you guys know, that their existing structure we have now is in need of replacement. It has 13 broken trusses. We've been band-aiding it together for the last decade or so. I'm, my report shows the sag in the roof, the back walls pushed out. I don't think we can afford to keep it going. So we put the proposal out, we looked at several different options on types of construction. The fabric building construction seemed to be the most feasible. We put design build out for that. We had two proposals. One was Higgins Construction. The other one was Robert Archibald General Contracting. We evaluated both proposals on certain criteria. The one that scored the highest was Robert Archibald General Contracting. It also had the lowest cost, came in at $228,000 roughly. This is over our budget that we initially proposed. The main reason of this is to do the inflation of materials. So I'm looking for the award of this proposal to Robert Archibald General Contracting.
Thank you, Blaine. Councilor Pence.
Was that about $50,000 over what we proposed, Blaine?
No, it came in a double, so about $100,000.
Yeah.
Well. It has to be replaced. In fact, I think if the building inspector went up there, he probably would condemn it.
And we did talk to a finance person who thinks that we do have room to borrow for it.
Yeah, we're gonna have to. Okay.
The reports also show pictures of the, you know, the, the temporary fixes we've made over the last while. We've, you know, put beams in and tried to increase the, the strength of the trusses that are broken, but once a truss or a truss member is broken, it loses all structural integrity, right?
Well.
It's been repaired many times over the past, so.
Mr. Chair, I, my personal feeling is, I think we're looking at a, an emergency fix here, and we have to do it. It's, I think we're going to have to bite the bullet on this issue.
There is no other way.
It's got to be replaced.
Just another thing that we're.
It's a lot of money.
I mean, price materials are.
Yeah, I know, just went up 35 to 40%.
The price of raw materials are still trending upward, too, so God knows how much it would cost next year if we, we went up to do it next year as well.
It's also a safety hazard, so.
Exactly.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah.
Pretty tight there.
So we need to move on ASAP. Yeah. Is there any further question before I call for a motion?
I don't think we can make a motion on this, Simon.
We, we can, and we recommend to the council for a motion. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, can I have a motion up to accept the lowest bid? Thank you, Councilor Pence. Do you have a second?
I'll second that. Will we give them the okay for Blaine to go ahead and?
Yeah.
Go ahead and start the shed?
Yeah, that is, that is correct.
So we, so I can issue a reward letter and it will be reconciled at the council meeting?
That is correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, we need to move on ASAP, Blaine, under the circumstances and the risk to our health of our employees. So I have a first and second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Country-minded. Motion passed unanimously. Thank you very much. Thank you, Blaine.
Thanks, Blaine.
Blaine.
Number nine is computer. Councilor Knight?
Yeah, thank you. Can you see me well there on your computer?
Oh, we see you very well.
Looking good.
Just wanted to say thank you again. Solvies came through again. They gave us the one I'm on there now, and this here, two laptop Dell computers, the new. Donnie Taylor, Donnie Taylor programmed them for us, and they're ready to go. I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion and send a letter to Donnie Taylor, have the mayor send a letter to Donnie Taylor, thanking him for program. He didn't charge us. It's a community thing he did for us. So we're, we're pretty well on our way with the Heritage Community Committee. I'm keeping computers here. I've been unloading some material onto them, and they're easy to walk off with until, until somebody gets back and we can secure them. I need to get, make some brackets for them, that when they're in place. Until, until it gets back and we can secure them, I need to get, make some brackets for them that when they're in place, they're locked in. So they, they can't be removed.
Perfect. Thank you very much, councillor Knight. Do I have a second for that motion?
I'll second it.
Oh, go ahead, Danny.
Thank you. I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Country minded. Motion passed unanimously. Number 10 would be next meeting date on June 28, 2021 at 5:30 PM. And number 11, over to you, Gary.
No move. Motion adjourned.
Thank you very much. We are adjourned.